All right. All right, welcome everyone, we're live.
Welcome everyone to our Tuesday, May 5th Board of Education meeting virtually. If everyone would please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and justice.
Welcome everyone to our meeting, I'd like to read a statement at the beginning of our meeting. First of all, I'd like to all of us to take a moment of silence for all those who have died or been due to the coronavirus. Thank you very much for that. We need to acknowledge and thank all the people on the front lines, our doctors, our nurses, our EMTs, all other healthcare professionals, our grocery store staff, our pharmacy staff, and all those who are helping during this crisis. We also must thank our students and their parents for their perseverance and distance learning. We know that it has been very hard. Our teachers, thank you for encouraging and helping our students continue to learn. For our Nanuet nurses, thank you for continuing to look after those children in childcare. For our cafeteria staff preparing the food for our children, our custodians to cleaning and disinfecting our buildings. For our central office staff under the leadership of Dr. McHale for their amazing leadership during this time. And to our Board of Education for the continued support of Nanuet schools. These are trying times for everyone, everyone, but we will get through this. We are very resilient, we're hoping that all of you stay safe and out of harm and stay home. Today, May 5th is Teacher Appreciation Day. And for those of your parents who are out there and for those teachers who may be listening, or administrators who may be listening. You know the trouble that our staff has had. The Board of Education did send out a letter to each of our teachers, our teaching assistants, and our nurses, thanking them for their dedication on our behalf. We could not do this without our teaching staff and our teaching assistants and our nurses. You have been absolutely amazing at what you have done to make this happen for our kids. Your encouragement, your hard work in getting online to make sure our children are receiving the lessons that you would love to do in person and in your classrooms, I know you would. But you have put yourself online to do this and and we greatly appreciate all that you have done for our children. And I know our parents also appreciate everything you have done. I went on both of those car rounds through Nanuet with our littlest ones and our older ones. And I have to tell you, the joy on the faces of the parents and the kids just to see their teachers was really wonderful, it was it was heartwarming. But Nanuet's kind of a great place. Nanuet's the kind of a place where you do want to raise your family because we care. And our teachers have put themselves out there and online and we truly, truly thank you on this, our Teacher Appreciation Day. So thank you very much to our staff for all that you have done for all of our kids. First item on our agenda tonight is approval of minutes. If the board member, please state their name when they're making their motion to approve the minutes. Motion please from someone. Okay, moved by Ann Stigman, second by. Somebody has to second.
Unmute?
Yeah, somebody, yeah, you have to unmute if you want a second. I see.
Oh, Chris, you have to allow them to unmute or unmute everyone. You have.
Sarah, I'll second it.
I'll second, okay, thank you.
We're all muted.
Chris isn't controlled the mute button.
Wait, Ann muted now. Ann, you're muted.
Hold on. You're muted, Ann.
Everyone's unmuted.
Allow them to unmute everyone.
Anybody have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried. Next under our agenda is our consent agenda, I need a motion please.
It's Lynn, I'll move it.
Lynn moves as second.
I'll second it.
That is Adrian. Anybody have any questions on the consent agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. Next under item on our agenda is certified personnel.
Resolve that the following individual be appointed as a substitute teacher effective 5/6/20, Jessica Alba.
Motion please.
I'll move it, Christine.
Moved by Sue.
Christine.
Second please.
Christine.
Second by Christine, anybody have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye, but.
A few people are muted again.
Man, I got muted.
I think you could all unmute yourselves.
And I couldn't do it, I kept saying the host was muted.
Okay. All those in favor?
It's taking away Chris's power.
The consent agenda, the certified personnel is accepted. Kevin, I think you had one as well.
Yeah, yeah, Kev, you want me to do it?
Yep, 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 and I'll say a few words.
Whereas the position of Director of Athletics will be vacant as of June 30th, 2020. Now therefore be it resolved that Philip Carbone is appointed to a four-year probationary term as Director of Athletics slash Director of Student Affairs effective July 1, 2020 to June 30th, 2024.
I need a motion please.
Sarah, I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Who will second, I'm sorry?
Adrian.
Adrian seconds, anybody have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. I know you're out there, Phil, congratulations, I know you can't.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I'll just say a few words about Phil Carbone, our 2020 Athletic Director choice. We interviewed a number of qualified candidates, unbelievable candidates, but it's just hard to to rest the majority of our pedagogy on relationships and not see what what a benefit that this leader has to the Nanuet School community. He's taught in Nanuet for 30 years, he's been a coach in Nanuet for 33 years. He lives in Nanuet, so he wears a parent hat. And he's also raised, he's raised three Nanuet graduates, three Nanuet Knights. You know, in my conversations with Phil, he's he's coached, you know, every every sport on the books. And then also as a principal who worked side by side with Phil Carbone. He's the, he was the director of our Social Studies Department, an AP teacher. He's going to help us redefine what a student athlete is. In our interviews, it was so clear to all of us that he has a vision for what a student athlete is like in Nanuet. And that they are knights for others. And that we're going to find a way to really bridge students who want to be involved in our athletics program. And there's a number of different ways they can do that. And Athletic Director Phil Carbone has the roadmap for all of our students, so we are really excited for this. You know, I know I'm excited as as new superintendent to partner with Phil. Our athletic, our athletic lane in our Nanuet schools is is near and dear to the community members. I know Nanuet is a definitely a sports town as as much as it is a music town. And I know Phil Carbone is so excited to fill, you know, the famous Athletic Director Frank Mazzucca's shoes. And on that note, I would like to say on another board meeting, we will talk about Frank Mazzucca. And, you know, his wonderful commitment to our school community and our thanks and appreciation for his lifetime achievement and all the things that he's done in our school community. But for tonight, I just want to echo the board's appreciation and acknowledgement that here in 2020, we have a new Athletic Director. So welcome, Phil Carbone, congratulations to you and your family. I'll be seeing you on the sidelines a lot at night, my friend.
Thank you, Dr. McHale. Next up on our agenda.
Ann, excuse me, I have one, just one more in sort of. I know everybody's excited. Resolve that Philip Carbone be granted an extended leave of absence from his position as a social studies teacher in the Nanuet School District from July 1, 2020 to June 30th, 2021.
I need a motion please.
I'll move it.
It's moved by Sue.
I'll second. Christine.
By Christine, anybody have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried, thank you, thank you, Dr. Fox.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is acceptance of gifts.
Whereas the New York Schools Insurance Reciprocal has provided a donation of $1,000 with the request that it be used by the Nanuet Public Schools for the additional cleaning costs due to coronavirus.
Thank you, motion please.
Ann, I'll move it.
Moved by Ann.
Lynn, I'll second, Lynn.
Second by Lynn, anybody have any questions? I think it's great because we all, we can use all the money we can get, especially for the cleaning. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. Next item on our agenda is budget transfers. Just back Noah.
Be it resolved that the Nanuet Board of Education approves the attached authorization for budget transfer dated May 5th to 2020 in the amount of $40,000 for the general fund. And be it resolved that the Nanuet Board of Education approves the attached authorization for budget transfer dated May 5th 2020 in the amount of $35,000 for the general fund.
A motion please.
Sarah, I'll move it.
Oops, too many, whoa.
Lynn and Sarah.
Lynn, Lynn moved, second Sarah, any questions on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried, our next item on our agenda is the superintendent's report.
Okay, so again, just to echo what our Board President Ann Byrne had mentioned at the start of the board meeting, that it is Teacher Appreciation Week. So I'd be remiss if I didn't mention once again how important our teachers are to the fabric of our community. They are on the front lines, once again, I will say this, every superintendent report keeping the social emotional connections with our children, keeping them engaged in meaningful lifelong learning practices each and every single day, even though it's a little different than what we're all trained and used to. But they're doing a fantastic job, they're professionally developing themselves. We are so unbelievably proud of them and, you know, I just can't continue saying that I've never been more proud to be a teacher than I am today during this crisis. But some of our unsung heroes are highlighted in my report today. Our school-related, our 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 support staff. These are the folks that if we were in sort of a normal world, they would be the faces that you see when you walk into every one of our schools. They would be the voices that you would hear when you call our business office, our district office. If you call HR asking for information, if you call the bus office, if you call any of our schools. These are the friendly voices and the friendly faces that meet you. So what are they doing today? What are they doing in this world? Well, they're doing a lot. They're calling families, they're they're listening, they're working side by side with their principals, with their superintendents, with their directors to contact families to make sure that everyone has everything that they need to engage in our school community. If you need a device, if you need assistance with signing up for free reduced lunch, if you need to get access to the buildings, if there's any information, if you have stuff in your locker and you need access to those things. These are the people that are doing a lot of these connections, so more than ever, our support staff are reaching out, connecting with our children, connecting with our families and making sure that Nanuet Schools are still in a constant dialogue with all of our 2,300 families. So thank you to our our secretaries, our support staff, and everybody that again keeps our operations and the relationships of our school community afloat. Next to them are our facilities, I know, Ann, you mentioned our facilities group that are cleaning our buildings diligently each and every day. Things that they're doing that's a little different that that most folks may not know is they are also assisting, if if our kiddos or their families need to enter our buildings for any particular reason. Our facilities team are acting as aides to walk people through hallways, to guide them through the schools safely. And then on their exits, they're making sure that our schools are disinfected and and just as safe as they were before people entered them. They're also supporting our food distribution program. We have many of our custodial team and our building and grounds team volunteering their time beyond their normal workday to do deliveries and to assist with our go pack. So thank you to Rudy Valani and his entire team. People are really putting on different hats and 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 just putting it all hands on deck time because you know, people's job descriptions right now are very different than what they were at the start of the school year. So thank you to our facilities, our custodial, and our maintenance teams as well. And last but certainly not least, our athletics department. We just appointed Phil Carbone, but both Phil and Frank Mazzucca have been working diligently with all of our coaches and for all of our sports, modified straight up through varsity, in keeping a tight engagement with our students who really need that. Our student athletes that need that social emotional connection, that need to connect with their peers around their sports and their black and gold. They're really, really instrumental in our mental health and our social emotional pillar, so thank you to our athletics department. And then last, I got to give a shout out to two really important people who allowed our parades to actually take off and be so successful. Katie Leahy, our Assistant Principal, and Jill Russo, our Assistant Director of Transportation. Truly brilliant job working with Clarkstown Police Department and Clarkstown Supervisor George Holman in setting up our parade routes, making sure that the routes that we took were able to contact each and every, you know, house that that we serve in Nanuet so that parents had access to the parades. I know they spent a long time reworking those parade routes and collaborating their time with CPD and Clarkstown and our Clarkstown Supervisor and George Holman's office, so thank you all so much, thank you to Katie, thank you to Jill. And, you know, we're just, we're so happy that those were both huge successes. Our K5 and our 612, you see all the information on social media, so thank you all. It's really, really important that we continue to celebrate our nights, even though we're on this distance platform, so thank you to everyone.
Thank you, Dr. McHale. First up, under unfinished business, I would just like to say to this class of 2020. You know, we are, we are so sorry that your senior year has been so interrupted. We are really, really proud of all of you and your accomplishments that you have made, not just in the classroom but also on the stage and in the arts and in the community and in the sports arena. Your class, this class of 2020, truly have been great leaders in our high school. There is nothing I can say that will make you feel better about your prom or graduation. We want not nothing more than to celebrate your amazing success and your accomplishments. So to the class of 2020, our hearts go out to you, we love you dearly. And we will be now talking about our plans for the class of 2020, Dr. McHale.
Okay, thank you, Ann, so I'll take that baton and and again, I'll double down on how much we do love you all. We love you, class of 2020, and we love you, class of 2020, moms and dads and families, grandmas and grandpas and guardians and everybody else that was so looking forward to these, you know, we have students that are graduating high school for the first time in their family, and this was a celebration that was very much, you know, looked forward to by so many different families. And our hearts are definitely hurting for this particular situation. So where are we right now in terms of Nanuet Schools in terms of celebrations, end of year celebrations? Well, first and foremost, we do have a plan. I I will tell you all, as superintendent, it is on my daily punch list of conversations with my colleagues in the lower Hudson Valley, it's not just in Rockland County but beyond, Westchester, Long Island, Orange County. Again, we're staying aligned in terms of being the the greater metropolitan area of this crisis. We're trying to, you know, exchange ideas and figure out what we can do within the parameters of being so close to, you know, sort of the the Mecca and the hub of this crisis, this pandemic in our area. What can we do to celebrate our students outside? Are there options for us? So first and foremost, what we do know is that there are a number of companies that have risen, that are offering their services with a a virtual platform. And, you know, nobody believes that a virtual platform is a substitution for a real graduation experience. In the same light that we don't feel that the the virtual teaching platform is a substitution for what we do each and every day in our classrooms as educators. But the virtual platform nonetheless will offer our students and our families an opportunity to take something away with them. A a video, a YouTube video, a stream of online experiences set to music with the right setting, with the right structure, with creative input, creative feeds that we're working on right now with Mr. Mahoney, Mr. Grau, our class advisors, Dr. Fox, our student advisory council. We're coming up with ways of making our online virtual graduation platform as meaningful as it possibly can so that they're something that families can take away with them. So that is one of our certainties, that we will be doing that for our students. Second to that, and by no means do we think that that's all we'd like to do. You know, again, I'd like to to take our our community and and point you to our enthusiasm for our kids, our parades, our our social media, the things we do throughout the years, nights under the lights, homecoming. This is not an administration that's afraid to celebrate children. We love celebrating children, we love celebrating the black and gold, and that's what we want to do. And we want to do it to the furthest extent that we can within the confines of the parameters of where we are in Rockland County, where we are in the metropolitan area in terms of this pandemic. So what I'm doing as superintendent and what Mr. Mahoney's doing as the high school principal and his cohort of colleagues is we are checking the pulse daily of what is acceptable, what is creative, what is out there. But we cannot fully move further than day to day until we start to get some parameters from the Department of Health here in Rockland County, New York State Department of Health is all well and good, but we need local Department of Health because what's going on upstate is very different than what's going on in the greater New York City area. So we're really looking for some guidance from our Rockland County Department of Health agencies to help us understand what the parameters are. And then rest assured, what those parameters are will give us the guidance to lay that framework over our action planning team, and we will event plan around that, celebrate our nights in the best possible way that we can. So to our parents, to our guardians, to the folks that are giving us information on our open forum document. We've read every one of your comments on the social media that we receive, it gets forwarded to us, we see the ideas. We know what they are, we're listening to you, we're going to continue to archive your your suggestions and your information. And we have open minds around it, we're just going to, for this next step, I'm working really hard to try to get some some explicit guidance from the Department of Health so that we could take your recommendations, layer it over what we're allowed to do at a respect for the the severity of this virus, so we don't put anybody's health at risk, that's the last thing that we want to do. It's the number one pillar in our school mission is safety, safety for our children, safety for our school community. And we will come up with a plan and we will share it with the community. So that's where we are right now, Mrs. Byrne, we we are definitive in terms of a virtual platform. And then we have ideas for something else, when it happens, how it happens. It's TBD right now, based on some guidance from the medical professions.
Great, thank you very much, Dr. McHale. The next on our agenda, I would like to take the questions that came in from the public. So the first question. How is the district making sure we know who needed Chromebooks for at-home learning?
So this is Chris Palizzi, I'll address that. The week before we left school, we did a survey of students 512 and we asked them what their technology access was at home. When those surveys came back, we looked through the results and if students needed a Chromebook, they were assigned a Chromebook and took it home before we left school. And then what we did was we did a community survey, this was mid-April-ish, so families, if they still needed a Chromebook at that point, and they noted in the survey, we were to contact them and get them a Chromebook. So that was as the learning shifted from packaged to more online. But then what's been the biggest success with Chromebooks and getting them out to students is that the teachers will communicate with the parents, they see that students are having trouble not handing in work, they're not hearing from the student, they'll reach out to the family. The family says, we don't have a device, we don't have enough devices, it doesn't work, it's not working Google Classroom. Then the teacher will communicate that with the principal, say, I have a family that needs a Chromebook. And then the principal will communicate that with Ursula Carbone, our Director of Technology, and then we'll arrange getting a Chromebook to that family.
Great, so so parents can get Chromebooks even now if they need it?
If we determine that they need it, yes.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Next question. How are teachers making sure they are meeting family needs and schedules and access vary from family to family?
I'll speak to that one too. So we know everyone's lives now might be different than they are during the regular school year. Parents might still be working, parents might be home working, so maybe they're doing meetings, they need their computer. Some kids' schedules might be shifting, we might, they might have something in the morning that they do work in the afternoon. So what the teachers are trying to do, they're doing a mix of lessons, they're doing some lessons that might be synchronous, meaning live. So they might schedule an actual time, say 10 o'clock is a class meeting. But a majority of the material is all asynchronous, meaning they can do it at any time. So if they need to go on to a classroom and text in a comment, they can do that anytime. If they need to watch a video of a lesson delivery, they can do that at any time too. But also if a student needs to just write out on a piece of paper an answer, take a picture of it and email it to the teacher. We're doing that a lot in the primary grades. So we're trying to, teachers are trying to deliver content different ways because one, how the students learn are different. But two, what their home lives look like right now are different as well. The parents working, students might need to wait for them to get home to help them with their work.
Thank you. How are teachers getting help and professional development during this time?
Ann, it's Meredith, I'll take that one. You know, I have to start by saying Kevin and you both led off with it being Teacher Appreciation Week and I mean, this professional development, I cannot, I cannot imagine working in a different district. We have literally the best teachers out there. They are working incredibly hard, they are learning so much every day, we have a standing 1 o'clock professional development. You know, we have internal and some external folks coming in. The professional development, you know, can be based on teacher requests, it can be observation of lessons, principals are dipping out of dipping in and out of some of these lessons. You know, things that improve student engagement, student interest. You know, things that improve student engagement, student interest. You know, how do we improve our synchronous lessons, our asynchronous lessons? We're focusing on the four Cs, so pushing for some collaboration, some communication among children because we know that in these times, kids can feel really isolated. And so when we entered this a couple of weeks ago, I think parents have probably seen a little bit of a shift as well where kids were working in packets and now we're moving way more virtual and pushing for kids to stay engaged by engaging in group work and, you know, having time to work with one another as opposed to just working one-to-one with the teacher. So teachers have had professional development from myself, from Mr. Palizzi on the tech platforms. Dr. McHale always says, you know, we're building this plane in the air and it's way more than that. I mean, we are, the teachers are learning, I say this all the time, how to pilot it, how to get it in the air, how to land it, get the kids on it, keep the kids on the plane. You know, so it's a big, heavy lift. And I have to tell you, it is impressive to see 100-plus teachers every single day logging in to the point where people get locked out and they're begging one another, let me in, let me in. And it's just been great. Principals too, they're all coming in and learning everything that they can learn. So we started the PD with really the tech piece in mind. One of our teachers shared, and she said, I'm doing things I never thought imaginable in the tech platforms. And as people have become more comfortable with those platforms, and I have to say, you know, Hyvee School just recently took on a heavy lift of switching to Google Classroom, something that they were not in before all of this. So literally, they're building the plane in the air and learning how to use it because that two-way communication between parents and students and teachers is so important. But, so we've gone from, you know, moving those platforms to now more of the instructional PD. So we have hosted famous folks from the education world, so Greg Tang. And we recently had Gravity Goldberg, who's a professional developer. And we're really trying to work with professionally developing teachers on how to apply what they do in their classrooms in this virtual environment. So we are also working on building our family university, which helps. The teachers are meeting regularly in team meetings with their principals, with their instructional facilitators and the department coordinators who have been incredible through all of this. We have some work going on with Rockland Bosse's. So we still have our Yale Ruler Program professionally developing all of our teachers, which maintains the social and emotional health of our kids and our staff. So super important. Hyvee and Miller were in their development of their charter when we went out. So that's been really critical to continue. The high school has a team that's being trained right now. We've had people attend, a large percentage of ELL teachers have been attending, teaching ELL students remotely. All the curriculum councils are continuing to meet virtually at Rockland Bosse's. And our K-12 committees are also meeting and professionally developing. So, you know, I have to say, I'm incredibly proud to be somebody who helps professionally develop these teachers. And for everybody who's listening and watching, you know, I say often, it gets me emotional because we literally have the best teachers. They are working themselves to the bone and they're still giving up their lunch and coming in at 1:00 to learn more. So, you know, they're just doing the best they can. You see it on social media and it's just incredible. So, yeah, they're busy, a lot of PD going on.
Thank you, Dr. Fox. Our next question I have is, what is this more? How is the district supporting parents for at-home learning?
I'm going to take this one too. So parents are now co-teachers basically with our classroom teachers at this point at home. So I think parents are learning how to be teachers and they're doing that. You know, one way is that on our website, we have the at-home learning COVID-19 response page and that has a whole at-home learning guide on it. So the parents can go through there and there's video tutorials of the technology tools we have. So how does it, how do we get an assignment? How do we hand that assignment back? How do we make a comment in Google Classroom? So there's those nuts and bolts. But then also too, teachers are making screencastified, so they're making screencasts of their lessons. So we hear a lot from parents that they'll watch those screencasts with their kids and then they'll go over the math problems with the kid. So that will vary depending on, you know, elementary, Miller and Hyvee parents probably watch it more so than middle school and high school. But we have from a lot of parents that they appreciate these little video tutorials for themselves and for their kids. And a lot of teachers are also speaking on the phone with parents, just, you know, helping them walk through problems. They're having office hours. Office hours aren't only for the kids now these days. Office hours are sometimes for the parents too. So the parents will, you know, call up a teacher, email a teacher, do a Zoom with a teacher to try and work through a problem that they might not understand how to do. And then also our technology department, when tech doesn't work on the family end, they'll talk people through. Ursula has been on the phone with parents to walk them through things. A lot of our tech TAs have been on the phone walking parents through things. And also principals too. Principals will talk with parents, see what's working, what's not working. Even the parents will even talk to our psychologists, our social workers, our guidance counselors because socially, emotionally, they're looking for tools to work with their students. And we have all those resources as well listed on our webpage when the, you know, when the parents don't need that one-to-one interaction. But that's how we're trying to meet the needs of the parents.
And I have to just jump in and say, because I'm looking at her on my screen here, that we would also be lost without Mrs. Heaney because, you know, she's talking to parents all day long as well. Our CSC meetings have continued without disruption, our 504 meetings. So, you know, it's all been an incredible team effort. And, you know, that piece of helping people to really understand as we transitioned into this has required, you know, a lot of manpower. But while you think that virtually you're going to disrupt relationships, in a lot of ways, we've built a lot of relationships too. Because, you know, kids are getting to see their teachers, teachers are getting to see their kids, their pets that are in their homes, their siblings, all these things. So, you know, the real silver lining is that we're talking to a lot of people all the time. And, you know, that's been really incredible in all of this. And everybody's, you know, phone lines and doors are open to have those, well, maybe not their doors, but you know what I mean, to have those conversations if anybody, if anybody needs the support really. And, you know, it's been incredible to watch the E&amp;L teachers, the special ed teachers. Everybody is just coming up with real creative ways, you know, to assist one another and to assist parents. She might be muted.
She's muted, she's muted. All right, Ann, you got to unmute, unmute. Chris, can she unmute? Mario, can you unmute?
I can unmute myself. I think she's having internet problems.
I think she's frozen, Kevin.
Oh, there she goes.
There she goes.
Oh, okay. No, I have access to the public questions, so I can, if she's frozen, I can continue us along. One of the other questions, has there been savings since we've closed? Have there been any savings? So Mario, maybe you can weigh in on that?
Sure, we've had some savings and we've had some additional costs. We've saved in security in about $40,000, give or take. We've saved some overtime, about $130,000. And we've saved about $130,000 in substitutes. We've also lost a lot of revenue in food service. And we've put out a lot of money in food service, we've probably lost about $100,000, give or take. And we've increased our tech budget to accommodate what Chris talked about a little earlier. That's about $40,000. That's basically what we know now.
Okay, I think Ann's internet, I'm trying to scroll to find Ann, her internet seems to be...
She, I think she went off and hopefully she's going to try and sign back in.
Okay, okay. So there's only one more question on the public forum saying, we see that the governor made some announcements about the election. You know, is there an election cost to this? What does this mean for nanuet schools?
Yes, going through the cost, it's probably about a $30,000 to $50,000 cost to mail all the absentee ballots home. Our clerk will be going over, I think shortly, what all the requirements are, but it's probably a $30,000 to $50,000 expense.
Thank you, Mario. I know you can't see me for some reason. It's taken me off and told me that the network connection is not working because of an error. So you can hear me, I hope.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Oh, good. I will sign in again on my other thing, but for now, the next question. Are there some examples where the district saves money from the budget due to the closure?
So Ann, when you were frozen, I just moved forward with the last two public questions. So Mario addressed publicly. Yeah, so we're, that's it for the public forum, at least what I can say is to the public who's listening. You know, I put up a video on social media. We can put out some more reminders. That's the best place for folks to put questions, comments, concerns, rumor busters, anything that you need. We check it daily. And so please weigh in on our website. It's a Google Doc and we will address everything that we can at our public board meetings.
Great, thanks, Kevin. I'm trying to get back on. I went out and got back on. Those are the only questions so far that we have had from the public. But there's a couple of other things that we have to do under unfinished business. Why don't we talk about our grading policy as our next subject?
Great, Ann, I can just introduce this quickly. You know, as you know and the community knows, we needed to come up with a plan for fourth quarter and figure out how we were going to deal with the grading situation given the virtual environment. So as many of you probably know, there's no, you know, template out there. Every district is doing things very differently depending on the needs of their community and the needs of their children. So after a lot of research, we did, in fact, look at districts all over the place from Long Island to Westchester to Rockland to Upstate. We utilized our partners at Rockland Bosse, all these county-wide principals. Everybody was sort of involved in this conversation. So what we've done is prepared a little bit of an introductory slideshow for everybody so that all the principals are on the call and what they'll do is just walk you through what this is going to look like. And we're hoping that it does a good job of easing everybody's anxieties because our philosophy with this approach is to do no harm to any child or any family, you know, who's struggling in this environment, which is obviously not perfect.
Yes.
It's also not something that anybody asked for. And we do have, you know, different situations due to the virus and, you know, how engaged people can be based on illnesses in their families. And, you know, so there's a lot of variables here. And we're going to go through that for the board tonight and for the community, anybody who's listening. And tomorrow, what will be pushed out from the principals will be screencastify videos. So if anybody's on tonight and doesn't, you know, get, take notes or get everything down and they start to think about things, we'll be able to get some of that information out beginning tomorrow on social media. And parents can always, you know, call their guidance counselors, call their principals if need be. So, you know, tonight is just a basic presentation that we would do live if we could, very similar to how we do things at our normal board meetings. So I'm going to hand it over to Mary Ellen and Nancy, who are going to talk a little bit about the K-4 approach. And then Ann Chen will speak about 5.6. Roger, Mike and Lily will speak about 7.12. And then Chris, you'll share your screen, right? So that...
I can do it now.
Okay, everybody watching can see. Okay, great, thank you.
All right, you guys can start, it'll come up in one second.
Hello, everybody. Nice to see everybody's faces, it's Mary Ellen.
Hi.
All right, here you go.
Okay.
Can you hear me okay?
Oh, Chris, it went away.
Yeah, I'm getting it up.
Oh.
There you go.
Okay, so tonight we're going to, we'll start with the elementary level. And it's Nancy, hi, everybody. Thank you for having us. We'll start with our rationale for grading from a distance. Chris, can you... Thank you. So during this, the complexity of this challenging time and the emergency closure of all of our schools, our discussions about our grading, after looking at a lot of other districts and having conversations then with our teams and our facilitators, our discussions really led us to a policy that takes into account many changing variables. Health, support at home, the structure within the day for our students, access to the work, all of these variables. And those variables change even within the last seven weeks for any given family. So we wanted to take that into account. And so it led us to the idea that our grading will be really primarily based on the degree to which our students participate and engage in their assignments. And our idea is that we don't want any student or family to feel that they are being penalized with, because of things that are outside of their control. And within that, our goal is really not only to teach the important skills and essential standards, but really to create a supportive environment that takes into account social, emotional learning and personal well-being. And within that, that links really to participation and engagement. Our teachers have been extraordinary at reaching out to families, engaging students in meetings and in conversations and small group work. So all of these ideas have been around really strengthening relationships and bringing students and families, teachers all together. So there's still a connection to the school environment. And our instruction is based on the core standards that we know really still need to take place between March and June.
Right, so this last marking period, oh, with Nancy, you had already said, you know, it's going to be viewed, the grading will be viewed holistically, taking into consideration all the variables that these families and students are going through with these challenging times and this new learning environment. And I have to give a shout out to the entire district's teachers as well because they've jumped in 24/7, literally, reaching out to families and it's incredible.
So when we get down really kind of to the nitty-gritty of our K-4, this is through the lens of K-4, looking at our report card, you know, we looked at our academic indicators, which is really a 4-3-2-1 four-point rubric. And, you know, that just didn't, that is just not going to work in this environment. And it wouldn't have the same meaning as it does when our kids are in school and having that continuous relationship with their teachers and with their learning. So we address this by really wanting to still have something that was familiar to parents and to students. So we looked at the descriptors in our behaviors that support learning. And those descriptors are boiled down to three things that you see here. Consistently, sometimes, and needs improvement. And we align that language that, for each category, with really what our students can do to the best of their ability in this environment. So a student participated and completed most of the assignments to the best of their ability. So there's a lot of range in there and it's really a much softer approach and less quantitative because that's really not as possible in this environment. So we see the indicators really going to be described as consistently, sometimes, and needs improvement in accordance with the academic indicators that we are choosing during this marking period.
So as Nancy has already said, you know, we're going to be looking at grading holistically through the lens of participation and engagement. And this is particularly challenging, especially at K-2, when you think about, we don't want to be, we want to avoid grading our parents, which the level of parental support at K-2 is pretty significant. So something that we have to take into consideration with, even with the these indicators, consistently, sometimes, and needs improvement. Okay, Chris, if you could change the slide, please, thanks. Great, so as Nancy said, the report card indicators reflect the standards that we're teaching during the at-home learning. And there's really so much incredible things going, so many things going on. But, you know, we had to taper it down. So just looking at ELA, we're looking at the foundational skills for kindergarten of phonics and writing. And then the literature and informational text and writing for first and second grade within the ELA standards. And within math, as you can see, we're going to be looking at numbers and operations and... And within math, as you can see, we're going to be looking at numbers and operations in base 10, really for all three grade levels. And then understanding the measurement and data geometry, which involves many, a variety of indicators that will score, you know, as we mentioned before. And then science and social studies will be report card comment section. They won't receive a C, N, or an S for those two subjects.
And at HighView, similarly, we focused on core ELA indicators, literal comprehension, inferential comprehension, as well as our focus for instruction is writing about reading. So that's really where the bulk of the writing is coming in. And our math indicators, really for both grade levels, are focusing on fractions and geometry, but in fourth grade, measurement as well. And again, science and social studies really indicated in the report card section. And those look more like project-driven assignments. And again, you know, you know how data-driven all of our teachers are and how analytical, and that's the life that we're all used to, are taking in. So to make this shift, I think, you know, everybody agrees that this is really what's best for our students and our families at this level.
Thanks, Nancy.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're ready to introduce our secondary, folks?
We're going to do Ann Chen next, 5-6 Academy.
Okay.
Hi, I'm here. Can everybody hear me?
Yep. Yep.
Okay, so I really worked on a continuum from K4 with the help of Ginny DeFeo and Jess Keveney. Our rationale is certainly the same, aligning with this new platform, being able to encourage engagement and participation. We use currently a different report card than K4. There are letter grades, A, B, C, and D. We try to now capture what are realistic and achievable expectations in this new platform. And we really align them very similarly to grades K4. So for classes that are into the fourth quarter, the performance will be based on how they're engaging as we move forward into the fourth quarter. I'm sorry, I'm going to read this off of my phone. So for an A, it's really fully engaged. All of their work is fully completed, tasks are completed to the best of their ability, and there is full engagement. That's with participation in the activities, attendance in the Zooms, interactions with the teacher, both during classes and during extra help and other times if it's needed. The step that we took extra in grades five and six was we focused a lot on the comments that would align with each grade only because it'll better illustrate exactly what the child was able to do. So for an A, the comments that we've added to our bank include, has completed all of the work during the home learning and has engaged in at-home learning activities consistently. So as we progress to each letter grade, you can see that it's just at a level that is tapering from that full engagement. So for a B, they're mostly engaged, most work is fully completed, tasks are completed to the best of their ability. They are mostly engaged. And again, the comments that go with that, has completed most of the work during at-home learning and has engaged in at-home learning activities occasionally. As we shift from B to C, and then certainly from C to D, we recognize that some of this may be with that co-team, either sibling or with mom or dad. I'm turning off my camera. I think my reception will be better. So for a C, it's some or partial engagement. Some work is completed, tasks are partially completed, and there is some engagement. The comments that go along with that, has completed some of the work during at-home learning and has engaged in at-home learning activities minimally. And in the columns for C and D especially, we recognize that there's going to be different layers of involvement based on the situations at home. And I'll read through D and then I'll talk a little bit more about that. For a D, it will be reflective of insufficient information to assess. Tasks are incomplete, there's minimal work completed, they are not engaged. But the comments, I think, I want to distinguish for this are, have not demonstrated understanding sufficiently, could not demonstrate understanding sufficiently, did not engage, and could not engage. And this column is one that we struggled a lot with because it is these students that are standing out to us when we meet regularly with the clinicians. And we really troubleshoot and figure out, how can we help this child? Is it the work? Is it too challenging? Is it the device at home? Is it that they need some support from the guidance counselor? Do we need to call mom and talk to her about how to best help them? Do we have to connect the student to a specific teacher? And so our goal is to really not see that there's a lot of traffic in the D column and maybe not so much even in C. And we're requiring the teachers report weekly on what the progress is with the engagement and participation for every student. And that's truly framing our clinician meeting every week to say, who's calling this parent? Who's going to check on and make sure this child has the resources he needs? So it's an ongoing conversation that we're hoping we will stay ahead of and not see that that is necessary. The only other thing I'll mention for the academy, this may be unique to us, I think, we actually have classes that just began for the fourth quarter. And so for those classes, the teachers actually won't have that face-to-face with the kids. For example, in a music explore class or art or home and careers. And we want to make sure that the lessons and projects are designed to support the home learning environment and that they're achievable and will be educationally fruitful for the kids. So basically, for the quarter classes, it will be using a sliding scale, using a range of 75 to 100. So certainly everyone's going to be achieving as long as they're participating and engaged. Weekly grades will be entered on eSchool to reflect participation in the projects. And that's a way of the parents and the kids also making sure over the course of this last quarter, they are online with what they need to do in those courses. And to my knowledge, that's already a communication that's going on with those explore teachers and the parents and kids. And so far, it's not been something we've addressed as a primary way of reaching out because typically if someone's not engaged in the explore classes, they're not in the core classes either. So it's just balancing those with the other courses. So that's the academy in a nutshell. I hope I've covered it clearly for you.
Yes, Ann, thank you.
Thank you. So Roger and Lily and Mike are going to talk about 7-12, which is a little bit more nuanced because of the issues regarding GPAs and semester courses and things like that.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. This is Mike Mahoney from the high school. I hope you can hear me. So, you know, it has been a long process. I want to thank our district superintendent and our district office for all the support that they've given us through this process and given us the time to research. I want to thank the school counseling staff, as well as the department chairs and all the teachers for their input. What we are doing here is very complicated. We're trying to maintain students' grade point averages, protect students' grade point averages in a time that we weren't really prepared for going to this home learning platform. So at the very end, what you see here is the result of a lot of work, collaboration, in terms of developing a plan. This current pandemic has put a big stress on our families. It also has put a stress on our students. Many are enrolled at the high school level in college dual enrollment classes, AP courses, honors courses, and the like. And in the middle school, what you'll see is we have very similar situations. So we can go to the next slide. And this plan, as you saw, is meant to, you know, improve student engagement, keep students engaged, encourage participation. And we're also looking to promote problem-based, you know, work as we go through a project-based work as well. And you see the difference in the nuance here between the high school and the middle school classes. And the reason why that's there is because we had a midterm in the high school. We kept that at 10%, but our marking periods one and two, we placed more emphasis there because we were in school for those entire marking periods. And we left marking period three alone. At the middle school level, you'll see that marking period three is left alone there as well. But we reduced the input or the impact of marking period four in terms of the final course average. Let me go to the next slide, please. So what we're going to do is we want to figure out a baseline for the students for marking period four. Now, there are many schools that consider going to a pass-fail option. But when you have secondary courses that are dual enrollment, you have a problem. You can't do pass-fail because they don't always transfer off to colleges. Additionally, pass-fail is not enticing to stay engaged in. So we wanted to come up with a process that would keep students engaged. So the first thing that we wanted to do was to recognize that students have different learning styles, different abilities. And we wanted to really emphasize the work that was done prior to this pandemic, the coursework that measures all of the different assessments and aptitudes that students deal with on a regular basis. So what we did here is we took the first three marking periods and we divide them by three and we get a base average. So this is an example that's very simple, 75 straight up. But if it were 76, 74, and 75, that would still be a baseline of a 75. And that would be their starting point baseline for their average. We can go to the next slide, please. So now what we're asking of students is to participate. And we encourage participation with this particular schedule. Now, if a student participates according to the teacher's individual rubric by discipline, 85 to 100%, they will get an additional eight points added on to that 75, for example. If they participated between 75 and 84% of the time, they would get an additional six points, four points. And then you'll see that if a student participated less than 65% of the time, they could lose four points. But that four points is off that 75. So the lowest that student can come out of the marking period four is with a 71. But they can also have, like I said, eight points added on to it. So the impact on the student's grade point average is minimum because that's only 15% of their final grade. We can go to the next slide, please. And why didn't we do it this way? Well, because we felt that learning styles, differentiated instruction, other factors impact the student's ability to perform well in assessments in this new home learning environment. Systems places emphasis on the work completed in additional school setting with incentives to participate in a home learning platform. And the baseline for the marking period would be the average of these three marking, would be the average first three marking periods. By doing this, we're really trying to promote social, emotional development. Next slide, please. So the emphasis on the prior work is really what we're aiming for. And that would also capture the diverse learning styles. And what we're really concerned about here, folks, is we're concerned about the student's grade point average at the end of the day. At the same point, we have to take into consideration that many of our students are in college-level dual enrollment classes. Well, we need to have grades at the end of the year. Additionally, we want students to feel that they're working towards something positive. So we hope that we created a platform here that builds into that positivity and that at the end of the day, they're coming out feeling good about the work that they've done while on this home learning platform because this is all about college and career readiness. And that's so important. And that's something that we really tried to emphasize into coming up with this plan.
Can I just add to that a little bit? Mike, this is Lily DeGraw, the assistant principal at the high school. I just want to kind of emphasize the redistribution of the percentages. You know, we had to redistribute percentages because New York State Board of Regents canceled the regions. And therefore, we canceled our final exams. And in order to take that 10%, which is the final exam percentage, we redistributed across the quarters. And we gave most weight to the first two quarters because students were still in that brick and mortar type of instruction. And third quarter is, if you look at the weight, it's also weighed a little more than fourth quarter because half of that quarter was also instruction in the building. And the virtual platform, we gave the least because we wanted to do the most, to minimize any kind of damage to anyone affected by the current situation. And we know that students all learn differently. And we wanted to also accommodate all their different learning styles. And we know we're, you know, differentiating the way we are delivering instruction in this virtual platform as well as differentiating all kinds of assessments that teachers are utilizing, including what Mike said about the project-based learning and projects that teachers are creating. So the redistribution of the percentages is duly because of the regions and the final exams being withdrawn or out of the equation. So students in the fourth marking period, the maximum points that they could lose will be the four points if they're affected by this pandemic and anything that they're, any kind of hardship that's occurring in their homes. They don't, their GPAs, and we know they work really super hard all year long. We'd hate for this platform and for this pandemic and things that might be happening or affecting their families to really think they're GPAs. So we really consider that heavily.
Thank you. And I'd like to emphasize one more thing. Our school counselors and our support staff are available at any time, as well as our teachers, myself, and Mrs. DeGraw. At any time, you can contact your school counselor, your teacher, or us if there's something that we need to address. And we will certainly work with families.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you, Lily. Yeah, I think, I think the grading approach that you all designed based on, you know, all of your research from neighboring districts and beyond, is perfect for an annual culture. So for all of our students out there, there's a huge incentive for you to continue to engage. You will see an uptick in Q4 if you engage. That's really the foundation of our K12 grading approach. Engage, engage, engage. If you don't know what that means, talk to your teachers. Talk to any of the teachers on campus, coaches, guidance counselors, therapists, anyone that you feel connected with. And ask them about what's the best way to engage. And, you know, our grading policy will, you know, pay dividends for you. So thank you all. Thanks so much for that. And then we're going to Dr. Fox. I know because folks have been listening all night and, you know, sometimes just listening in with a, you know, pen and a pad in front of you is not enough. We're going to do some webcasting, screencasting exemplars and put some video on the websites. So if I'm a high school, middle school parent, and I want to see if my child's 78, what that looks like, or my child's 88 or 86, what that looks like through the algorithm. I could run that after watching some videos online, right?
Yes. The, for example, the high school's screencast is almost five minutes. So there's a lot of kind of detail in there. Mr. DeGraw walks you through it.
Okay, great. That's great.
Ann, or Kevin, do we want to do the resolution for the grading for tonight?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
You have it, Mary?
I have it.
Mary, you have it, right?
Yep, I have it. Okay, so I'll leave the extensive detail out that the principals just went through because you just saw it on all the slides. But whereas the recent COVID-19 plague has resulted in a gubernatorial order to have virtual learning since March 13, 2020, and whereas the district believes it would be unfair to grade students in accordance with the current policy, given that order, now therefore be resolved that the district hereby changes the grading system for the 2019-2020 year only to provide for everything that you just heard. And to the extent that this differs with policy 4710 and regulation 4710R, those policies are suspended for the 2019-2020 year. And we'll ask that a first reading of the change of the policy is hereby waived.
Right, great. Thank you very much. I need a motion, please, from the board.
Christine, I'll move it.
Christine moves it. A second, please.
Sue, I'll second it.
Sue, second. Does anybody have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? It is carried. This will be our first reading. We'll do our second reading at the next board meeting. Thank you very much. Before our principals leave, we have several more things on the agenda. I just want to thank our principals because I know they've gone above and beyond the call of duty to try and keep all of their staff, you know, with all of the things that they need between professional development and whatever else that they might need. So thank you. Thank you, administrators, for being the leaders in your buildings and in our districts and helping our students and our parents and our teachers and our community move forward. Thank you so much for everything that you have done.
Ann, we couldn't do it without them, honestly.
Amazing.
No, I believe you. I absolutely believe you.
It's like they're on speed dial, they're on Zoom, they're on everything imaginable. And they are teachers, they are teachers themselves, too. They are teachers themselves too. Even though we pulled them in to be administrators, they're still teachers. So they're part of our appreciation as well. But I, I mean, there's no way we could do this without them, so.
We have a question from Sarah. How are students and parents able to track how they are evaluated against the high school? Just went off the screen. Sarah, maybe you can speak to your question.
Yeah, my question was, and thank you very much. That was very clear and understandable. If I'm a student and you're giving me a percentage based on my participation, where do I see that percentage? How do I know what my percentage is, how I can improve it? Where is that conveyed to me?
So if I could speak to that, after this is approved by the Board of Education tonight, I spoke with Ursula Carbone. That's going to be part of the portal, the portal that we have through e-school. And they'll be able to see their assignments posted within the portal as always. So we're following the same practice. What is happening here is, you know, we're not going to have the traditional test assessment that will be listed in the portal. So it could be projects, assignments, it could be listed as homework even. Whatever the rubric is that the individual teacher has in place, we want to provide the disciplines, math, English, social studies, science, et cetera, with their own ability to measure music, art. The way that they measure participation is going to be slightly different. So I hope that that makes sense, but it will be something that that's within the portal system.
And Mike, I'm glad you just emphasized that because it's in the the policy that we just read. It was letter B or C that I probably should have read, but that's an important point that I don't know if you we said. And that is that final exams will not look like they traditionally do. So, you know, kids can take a breather there. They will be, you know, different kinds of project-based things, but final exams will not exist as we know them to. So that I really wanted to make sure we said that because that was the point that I think will give everybody, yeah, give everybody a, you know, a sense of relief, so.
Yes, anything cumulative, Dr. Fox, if I may add, would come in the form of a a project or anything that the teacher designs. As soon as we, you know, hash this all out and got it approved, the teachers will be able to go onto the portal and start inputting their participation. So students will be able and parents will be able to access that. We're holding off until we all were in agreement on to how we were going to address it. That's why if there is any kind of question up to this point. But from now on, teachers will be inputting participation grades based on, you know, synchronous and asynchronous lessons and any kind of assignments that the teachers are assigning in Google Classroom. So student engagement will be assessed based on the criteria set by each individual teacher. We created this, given the teachers some autonomy on how to be able to assess. But given the confines of a grading system that will be doing minimal risk and minimal harm to students that are, you know, participating and being engaged.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much for the input.
I think Sue, did Sue have a question?
Yeah, I didn't have, well, yes. Well, first of all, before the evening goes, I just wanted to say happy teacher appreciation and congratulations to all those teachers and professionals that are doing such an amazing job. I, you know, I hear from the community that Nanyuette seems to be getting better every week, which is really amazing to me that you're trying, the teachers and the parents and the community is trying something new and being successful at it as best they can. I had a question and I'm also thrilled to hear about how you're following up on the kids that are disengaged. But what percentage ballpark of the kids are are pretty much disengaged? What are we looking at here?
I can speak for the high school, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna, yeah, I was gonna just speak generally and say that it's gotten better over the, as time has gone on. And, you know, I mean, if I had to guess, because I've looked at the numbers, the principals have been reporting the numbers to me. Dr. McKay Hill and I made a threat that we would start going out and knocking on doors if we had to to get people engaged, but we didn't have to do that. So, you know, generally, we were down to, I would say, less than a handful in most of the schools. And that has even dwindled. And in some of those situations, they have been families who have moved and we didn't realize they were moved because of these, this virtual environment. And admittedly, there were some who had some family issues going on resulting from COVID and things like that. And, you know, to Anne Chen's point earlier about the incredible lifting that our psychologists, our social workers, our principals, our teachers have done. Mr. Metcalf, dean of dean of students, like, you know, he's another one who's who's done an incredible job reaching out to these families and, you know, asking, how can we support you and get you on our platform? And as I said, they're reporting these numbers to me every week. So very generally, I can say that, I mean, I would argue to say we're up in like ninety seven, ninety eight percent engagement. So we have very, very little. And that's being, you know, that's being generous to the disengaged, honestly. Because, you know, a couple of the schools only have one or two that, you know, they would put in that full disengaged category. So, you know, I saw the principals shaking their heads, which I guess means that they agree. So that would be a real, you know, general, general statement, but we've been blessed. Our families have been incredibly supportive and, you know, the kids are becoming more and more independent as time goes on, which is fantastic too.
I just wanted to also say that I'm concerned about the fatigue of the teachers and the students and their parents and just urge them to hang in there. They're doing a, they're doing a great, great job. And it is noted and appreciated and hopefully this too will end. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Before everybody leaves, you brought up Brian Metcalf. I just wanted to congratulate the National Honor Society. They had a virtual induction this last week and it was so well done. I'm sorry that we couldn't have seen the kids in person and congratulated them in person, but it was really nice for everyone in the community to see that video and to see the list of the names of the of the kids who were inducted into our National Honor Society. So kudos to the high school and Brian Metcalf, who was the, who was the director of the National Honor Society. So thank you for that. We have several other things under unfinished business. The next thing I'd like to get to is about our budget votes and our board elections. And I just want to read this statement. On Friday, May, May first, Governor Cuomo issued executive order number two zero two dot two six, which modifies the rules under which school districts are to conduct the twenty twenty annual meeting for the election of school board members and budget votes. The twenty twenty annual budget vote and school board election will take place remotely on June ninth, twenty twenty. Now, Annie Doubleear, our district clerk, will explain the details. Annie.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So as Anne said, for this year's election, it will be a remote election. All qualified voters who are registered with either the Rockland County Board of Elections or directly with the district will automatically be mailed an absentee ballot with a prepaid, with prepaid return postage. So all those people will receive ballots in the mail. And then what will happen is they will need to return those back with that postage prepaid to the district before Tuesday, June ninth at five P M. We will also be sending out a postcard in the coming weeks to everyone in the district, which is required by the governor's executive order to give notification of the remote election date and also the manner. We are still waiting on many clarifications on the order. So we'll just keep everybody updated with, you know, keep posting updates on our as time goes on in our meetings. That's it.
Thank you very much. Next on it is availability of New York State report cards. Is that over to Dr. Fox or Dr. McKay?
Yeah, no, I can, I can point everybody in that the right direction. New York State School District report cards available and can be found on our website under the district tab and the New York State report card link is right there.
Okay, great, thank you. Anyone else on the board have any other unfinished business before we go on to new business? Okay, under new business, first up is Rockland County School Board Association, Christine.
Well, we have not had a live meeting since the last time. So actually, since we all went into quarantine. We are having our next Zoom meeting on May eleventh because that's going to probably be our last meeting of the year. But I do have a meeting with the executive board to try to do some, make some finalizations of the end of the year for budget approval and so on. But basically, what's been happening with Rockland County School Boards is discussing what you just mentioned about, you know, what was going to happen with the budget vote. So the Rockland County School Boards is working with L H E C and Ostroff and Associates to kind of come out with, they're hoping to work with the governor to come out with some clarifications on some of those things and how Annie's going to be able to get her job done. Or is she going to be hand counting thousands of ballots? They're hoping to get the machines or something. So as we get details, you know, I'm sure it's going to come through a lot of different avenues. But that's basically it. So we're just, you know, just trying to keep things going and kind of finalize the year.
Okay, as far as New York State School Boards and national, one of the things at the state level, which I found very interesting, I please everybody fill out your census forms. In New York State, so far, we only have about forty nine percent of the public who have filled out their census form. It's really important for us to get federal aid because they base a lot of the formulas on giving us aid on the census. And if if we don't sign our census and give it back, we're going to be losing, and I mean this literally, billions of dollars in New York State because of our numbers of people in our state. So please, fill out your census form. The second thing is really, really good news. Under the, the Every Student Succeeds Act, there have been schools in New York State that have been designated as terrific schools. And we are very, very pleased to announce that the Nanyuette High School and the George Miller Elementary School were recognized for showing high academic achievement, student growth, higher improving graduation rates. And they've had to make progress during the prior year so that they're included on the list. The recognition schools also must perform acceptably for all subgroups for which they are accountable, such as students with disabilities or those who are not native English speakers. Each recognition school will receive a certificate from New York State Interim Commissioner of Education. So kudos to our both schools who are, have made the best of the best in New York State. I'm not surprised because we are the best of the best in New York State. As far as the national level is concerned, we roll kind of glue to our TVs to find out what's going on and what's happening. All I can say to all of that is please be careful and please be safe. And please take this serious. This is something that we can all control if we do and follow the guidelines of our health department. Any local government from anyone on the board? Does anyone on our board have any new business they'd like to bring up at this point?
I don't know if this is new business, what you want to call it, but I did have to give a shout out to Alex Fung and the Senior High School Orchestra. The piece they produced and posted on Facebook was amazing. And the musicians throughout the county and all of our different school districts, you know, coming together virtually to perform, I'm really impressed and I just want to give them a shout out.
Right, thanks, Sarah.
That was beautiful.
Yeah. Anyone else want to say something under new business? Well, I want to thank everyone for participating tonight and thank you for our community for being out there and greeting our teachers with their lovely signs of thank you, teachers. It really lifts the spirit of everyone when we have a community such as a Nanyuette community where you lift everyone's spirit. So now I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll move it.
Let's move by, who was that? Sue? Second, please.
Adrian.
Seconded by Adrian. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everyone. Thank you, community.
Thank you, Anne.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.